All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order for our September 28th Regular Board Meeting. If everyone will please stand for our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone that is present, those that are also viewing online. At this time, can I have an adoption of the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Foley, Ms. Eslick. All in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed. We're gonna turn it over to Dr. Buck for his superintendent report. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Glad to have your full house here today and glad to have students back in the in the board meeting, so we're excited about that here in a little bit. You hit a couple of highlights. First off, thank you to everyone who was able to attend the Lee Summit High School dedication, open house, ribbon cutting, the thousand cupcakes consumed. We got to show off the building. It was fantastic, almost like a reunion, and it was it was a lot of fun to see everyone there. So, thank you for everyone who helped put that together. Thank you to everyone who participated and volunteered, and thank you to our our staff who organized the LSR seven Choose to Include event that was last week. It's the second time we have done that, and it's a huge success, so thank you for that. It was a warm day, so thank you for enduring that part of it. I want to congratulate, we have five high school students, one at Lee Summit High, one at Lee Summit West, and three at Lee Summit North, who are designated as 2024 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. So, congratulations to Kaylee, Thomas, Alexander, Leela, and Ricky. Congratulations to our very own Jen Bigger at Hawthorne Hill for, she's a counselor there. Her work has helped Hawthorne Hill earn the Geisberg National Recognized Missouri Program. If you remember, Mason Elementary won this a couple of years ago, if I remember correctly. And you'll remember Jen because she was here not that long ago with a therapy dog or facility dog. So, congratulations to the Hawthorne Hill staff and to Jen as well for that honor. And then, last but not least, in October 17th, the Board of Education is gonna host an event, World Cafe, at 6:30 PM at the MIC or STA, whatever you want to call it, campus at 6:30. So, we'll have an open, or a structure where you get to meet the board and visit with the board and share with the board. So, we encourage high participation, and again, that's October 17th at 6:30 PM over at MIC, and I believe we might even have some food for you, I think, at that event. So, hope to see you there. All right, we'll move on then to 3.01 Pleasantly Middle School. And I see that Dr. Brian Lindquist has brought multiple friends, and he, first off, he's gonna start off with presenting something. We're gonna have, each time buildings come and do a spotlight, we're gonna have them recognize a volunteer. And so, board, after he recognizes volunteer, we'll have you come up front and get a picture with the volunteer and Dr. Lindquist. So, without further ado, Brian?
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to be here. On behalf of Pleasantly Middle School, I want to take a moment to recognize the Volunteer of the Year. As you know, we transitioned from a 7, 8 building to a 6 through 8 building last year, and part of that transition brought an infusion of life into our PTA, something that we had not experienced in the past, past to that level. So, in appreciation of your dedication and hard work towards revitalizing the PTA for Pleasantly Middle School students and staff, I'd like to recognize Jackie Snyder as our Volunteer of the Year. I love that piece, so thank you for allowing us that opportunity to recognize Volunteer of the Year. Second up, we have an FTC Robotics Team. So, if you did not know, our FTC Robotics Team is a group of 6 through 8 graders that competes against 6 through 12th graders in the Kansas City Metro. In the last four years, they've made the state finals for robotics, and they'd like to share a little bit about their message, their teams, and what they do. So, I'd like to welcome the Pleasantly Middle School FTC Robotics Team, Mrs. Bobel and the students. Come on.
Come on, we can do better than that. Let's give it up to our young people.
All right, thank you guys so much for having us. As Dr. Lindquist said, we are the Pleasantly Middle School Robotics Team, and we have a small but mighty crew with us here today. We have a handful of kiddos who were in our robotics team last year and are continuing on in our robotics team this year. A lot of our kiddos went up to the high school, but the nice thing is that allowed us to keep every 7th and 8th grader that applied for our team this year, in addition to a few 6th graders. So, we have with us today Graham, and Lilly, and Ethan, and Sullivan. And a testament, I think, to our robotics team is that quite a few of these kiddos couldn't be here because they are involved in other activities. And so, what we offer our students is a place for kiddos to find their belonging. And as I said, this year, we are able to widen the number of kids that we keep. So, we kept every 7th and 8th grader that applied and a few 6th graders. FTC requires kids to be of a certain age to participate, and so, we kept some 6th graders whose birthday will fall within that range, and then we're looking at ways to incorporate 6th graders through a during-the-day club setting. We had a shift, as Dr. Lindquist mentioned, with bringing 6 through 8 graders up to the middle school. That also meant that Pleasantly Middle School no longer directly fed Lee Summit High School. And so, before, our students would get on a bus, and they would go over to Lee Summit High School, and they would do their robotic scene in the Lee Summit High School Robotics Shop. And so, now, what we are working on last year and this year is housing our own program within our own school. With the help of Tiger Robotics, they've been amazing, and allowing us to then cultivate those relationships for our kiddos who don't go to Tiger High with their other schools that they will then proceed on to. So, that has led to some challenges in terms of getting supplies and materials and finding a nice space where our kiddos can work. But, we're really excited about what we accomplished last year and what we hope to accomplish this year. And then, these guys are gonna talk to you about what robotics offers them in terms of the robot and also in terms of other life skills. Good job, guys. You're doing great. Take it, Ethan.
All right, so, our, in our robotics lead team, we participate in like tournaments. We have, like every year, there's a different challenge that we have to overcome, and we have to build a robot to the needs of that challenge. And during the year, there's many problems that are like, that have to be solved, so that helps with the problem-solving skills. And there's many other aspects that can help with building the robot, and...
Good job. Good work. So, last year's game, they had to build a claw to pick up a cone to lift it up and put it over a thing and drop it down. And so, they have to think about, how are we gonna do that? And then, they have to communicate to the people who are doing the coding, how are we gonna code it to do that? And then, they also have to think about, how are we gonna score points if that happens to malfunction at a meet? Did anybody want to talk to that piece? Thanks, Sullivan.
So, sometimes things can malfunction, of course, with things as complex as robots. So, we have to be able to think on the fly and be able to adapt to any challenges that we are faced with. For example, last year, we had a lot of problems with the way we lifted up our cones. And we had to completely just scrap that idea and resort to being a pushbot for a whole meet, which was not fun, but it did allow us to at least score some points, and we at least did have a functioning robot for that meet.
All right, and then each year, as he mentioned, the game might be different. So, some years, we might be shooting a basketball, and some years, we might be picking up something, but that something is not a cone shape, it's like a square, and it's larger. And so, they have to do a lot of thinking and problem solving. And then Lilly's gonna share with us, and maybe a little bit of her friends, about some of the ways that robots help prepare them for life other than building and coding.
Okay, so, we had to write a grant because our school does not have many funds for the robotics team. In fact, last year, the season, we started with a thousand dollars in debt. So, it... So, this grant really helped a lot. We could actually buy stuff and didn't have to cut screws in half. So, we actually got money, we could actually do more things, so that helped a lot. We did, and still cutting stuff in half, though. We also have on there with the outreach team is Krista McGolf honorary coin, and it's for STEM teachers, and it recognizes them for doing good jobs or doing things that the students like. In fact, we actually took a poll of the students to see which STEM teacher was their favorite, and we got that, it was one of our math teachers, Ms. Tara Sisk up there, and they just liked it because she was nice, she was a good teacher, and that's why she was awarded that coin. We were also interviewed. Because we got the grant, we were one of few that were selected, as many apply but not all receive the grant. So, we were interviewed about it and how it helped, and we had to be succinct. We had to learn what to say to get our point across, still be interesting and not take up too much time. Up there is one of our members, Leon, though he could not be here today. He was one of the members that was interviewed. He was, he talked about the robot and how that was building. I was also interviewed, I was talking about writing the grant itself and how that helped us a lot. Obviously, we're really poor. So, yeah, that's really what we did.
And then, at tournaments, they also have to speak to the judges, and they have to present their portfolio. And so, between the being interviewed, the talking to you all now, and talking to the judges, they get to practice their public speaking skills. That grant they mentioned, that was through the Lee Summit Educational Foundation, it was their student-led grant writing. And so, a number of our members worked together on that, researched their needs, researched their budget, worked on writing that up, and were lucky enough to to have been awarded that grant. So, they did not have to cut screws in half, which they were obviously very pleased about. So, we thank you guys very much for having us and for your time. We love our program.
Before they take their seat, thank you for the presentation. I want y'all to come up here and get a picture. I know parents are trying to take pictures, and your backs are turning.
Hang on, I have a question. I have a question, actually. Sorry.
Is it about how Brooklyn?
First off, Grant, Grant didn't speak, so, would you like to speak?
Graham, take the floor.
So, yeah.
What'd you like me to speak about?
No. That's perfect.
Good response.
I have a question for you, okay? How much time do you guys spend at meets actually having to work on the robot and the amount of tools that you guys take to each individual meet?
At the meets?
Uh huh.
So, at the meets, we would take our basic stuff, the allen wrenches and our screwdrivers. We would many times lose our allen wrench and have to steal from the other teams.
That's true. That's true.
Borrow, borrow, borrow. He didn't borrow. But, that resulted in a lot of losing of allen wrenches. And then, we had to end up using pliers because we didn't have wrenches the last year. And we ended up breaking our lift almost every meet, at least twice, and we had to fix that multiple times.
Yeah, so to your point, a fair amount, a fair amount of time. You, yeah, these meets are half-days long, but they compete twice during the course of that half-day, but there's a lot of time between that's like, oh, we gotta fix this, oh, we gotta fix that, and there's a lot of scrambling. And so, we carry as much as we can with us and hope we have the right stuff. Good job, Graham.
Can I talk now? Can I talk now? At this time, if y'all would come up front, and if you would take a pictures, and in parents, if you would like to come up and take pictures of your young people here at the dais. And if the staff would come and take a picture with them. Thank you.
One more, one more. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Come on, let's give them another hand.
Thank you very much, guys. You've lightened up our day with that, so I appreciate you guys coming and spending time on your busy night. Next is 4.01 Board Reports or Meetings Attended.
All right, so at this time, this is our opportunity for the board members to express the meetings that they have attended and get, excuse me, give any report that they would like to give to the full board. And so, at this time, let's start with Board Member Eslick, if you're ready.
You always start with me. Okay.
Next, next week, Dr. Johnson, you're on board, all right?
She's just gonna move. Okay, so, I had quite a few meetings since our last board meeting. Both President Sparks and I attended the Workforce Alliance meeting, and just a big highlight out of that was the great work that our Summit Technology Academy does. Because one of the highlights of that meeting was two internships with some local businesses where some prior STA students had come to be paid interns. One was Ultrax Aerospace, and the other was Worlds of Fun. Ultrax, Ultrax Aerospace had an intern who was a graduate of STA. He wasn't a Lee Summit student, but just the skills that that student had gained from STA, that business had nothing but positive things to say about the types of students that come out of that organization. With Worlds of Fun, that intern was Alex Santoro. He is an LSR seven graduate, and again, he has stepped right into that organization and made meaningful impact in their business with regard to their, it was food services. Their food services group that they, that he was specifically working with. And that individual over that department also had just absolutely wonderful things to say. And it was really a testament to the strength of STA as a whole in giving our students challenging academics and putting them in real-world situations that can make them successful once they graduate. So, that was a really amazing outcome from that meeting. So, very strong kudos to STA. I attended our Board Policy Committee meeting, and nothing significant, honestly, out of that meeting. We will be reviewing policies CB and CHCA in the month of October, but this meeting was mostly organizational as the first meeting of the year. I attended the Lee Summit Ed Foundation Board of Directors meeting as well. We have the Community Breakfast tomorrow that is being put on by Education Foundation. I don't think you can still register, so it's happening tomorrow, and if you're already registered, then I will see you there. But otherwise, next year, be on the lookout for that because that's a really great event. We do have Race for the Future coming up that is also a Ed Foundation benefit. October 14th, come run a 5K, or you can just pay to register and be a dream partner and sleep through it, but you can still pay the registration fee. And then, I attended our Finance Committee meeting, which was just yesterday, and we also, all of the board members have participated in our communications audit, and I think everyone's probably completed that already. So, that concludes my board report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Murdock?
I'll be brief. Lee Summit, high dedication, fantastic. I think, saw most of you there. There's been a lot said, obviously, on social media and lots of areas and pockets around Lee Summit. The building looked fantastic for it. It was cool to see the number of previous graduates that showed up for the touring. I believe, unless I'm wrong, the graduates of the 70s had the largest contingent there. Is that accurate?
Yes, there was a big contingent of 50th reunion was gonna happen, so yes.
Right, so that was, that was, that was cool to see and to talk to some, to talk to many of those people as well. Kim Fritsch introduced me to a lot of them, so that was really cool. So, I attended the Government Relations meeting last Friday. The presentation was from MoDOT. The MoDOT essentially was talking in terms of what their responsibilities are versus the funding that they get in. They understand that they are behind. We're one of the few states that have, the state takes, takes over all of the roads essentially, where the county doesn't end up having a budget to do roads, so they have far more lane miles and stuff than most states would as a result. And so, that was a good presentation, though I will say it was a little repetitive over the last couple of years as well. But, I think to that point, it's just noted that the same issues exist that they're trying to work on. It's not a negative reflection on them. It's just, we're working on it, we just haven't got there yet. So, that was a good presentation. And then, the update, obviously, from all of the different elected officials at that meeting was good. They prayed for good weather at the, at Oktoberfest for that. They kind of got their wish, with the exception of Saturday afternoon, I think. That was a little dicey, but good event overall there. And then, lastly, I participated in the CSEP Committee this past Tuesday, where we are drafting the new School Improvement Plan. Terrific group of people that are working on this. We worked in small groups to go through multiple avenues of how we want to tackle even getting through and building the new plan that we need to have in place in the spring of '24. So, but a terrific group of people, a large group of people there participating. And so, I really respect everybody giving up their time on Tuesday night to come out and help us build that plan. We have six more meetings, five more meetings, five more meetings, Dr. Barker might say six, by the time we're all said and done, but five for now to get it finalized. That concludes my report. Thanks.
All right, thank you for that report. Dr. Johnson, any reports?
Okay, so, I got to do quite a few things since the last board meeting. The first thing I did, I attended Team Lee Summit, which was actually an amazing eight hours. I did not know I would be able to get through that, but I was. And I wanted to say what I gained from that meeting. I'm serious, it was eight hours. It was a great team, there was a lot of collaboration, and what I just want to say is walking away from that meeting because those are highly confidential. But, walking away from that meeting, I really encouraged us to make sure that we are celebrating the wins of this district. We put out really great productive citizens into our society, and we should absolutely be LSR seven proud. And I think that that team and the leaders in that team can also go back to their local teams and let them know, we are working, we are collaborating, we are talking. And so, I think it's really important that we continue to share that throughout the time that we spend together as a community. But, Team Lee Summit was really cool. I took some type of color test, and I was not happy with the results. It was like a, a behavioral test of some sorts, and if you checked off certain marks, you were a certain color. So, I don't know who else was in the room at the time. Needless to say, I wanted to be blue. I thought I was an emotional, touchy-feely, lovey kind of person. I'm not. And I so want to be blue, but I'm orange and, I'm green and gold, which was like data, facts, shake hands, this is all we do. So, I was disappointed in myself. I have some growth that I can gain from. So, thank you so much, Team Lee Summit, for humbling me in that way. I also attended the Choose to Include event that they had at Lee Summit North. It was absolutely wonderful weather. It was great to see everyone get out. And I could have used some of those skills myself, but it was a really good time. They had great weather. I love to see the students supporting other students, like older students or students with higher skill levels, supporting other students. So, that was really amazing, and I think kudos to the district for doing that and to Mother Nature for providing such good weather. And I did some team, I did some school visits, which was definitely the most exciting. I like all of the competition between the principals and the schools and who thinks their school is the best, and I wish I could say who I voted the best, but I can't, because I can't show favoritism. But, I went to Bernard Campbell, Underwood Elementary, Meadow Lane. I went to Cedar Creek Westview. And so, I really enjoyed going to all of those schools. I got to hear from principals that had a lot of experience and have been in education for a very long time. And they also confirmed for me, being administrators and being teachers for 26, 27, and 30 years, that our district is doing good things. I cannot say that enough. So, while there are challenges that we have to tackle at times, please, staff and employees of LSR seven and volunteers, pat yourselves on the back. Our students are doing well. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that report. Board Member Garrett, do you have any?
Thank you. So, I guess, back on September 13th is when I first met with Dr. Carlson and Ms. Judy Sklerstein to get my orientation for the Team Lee Summit meeting, which I had the next day. So, it was great to see all the members, meet them, and we took some tests, the color test. I, I don't remember everything about the colors, but it was a great kind of figuring out personalities and kind of finding out the issues of the day with LSR seven. And there's a lot of things great going on with LSR seven, so I was glad to kind of get acquainted with everyone. And then, following that, I had on September 20th, went to a breakfast out in Kansas City, bright and early. But, we had a campaign to support public education. So, once again, it was great to see other local Kansas City school districts coming in and talking about what programs that they have in their school districts, and opportunity for them to shine, and then just learn what works, what is, what they're doing great at that we might be able to learn from. So, then I had, what's next? The Choose to Include. So, that was my first time. I'd never really heard about it before, but I thought it was great to witness students coming together, cheering on the other students that participate with the Special Olympics, and that encourages students to pair up with them, to participate alongside them when they're doing different sports. And I'm trying to think, what else did we have? Well, then we had the Lee Summit High School Dedication Ceremony and the tour. My child will be going there next year, so I was really glad to see all the changes. It looks beautiful. Let's see. Then, I had the Summit Lakes Middle School Tour with Principal Dr. David Mitchell. And he was showing us all the updates that they had to their school, which I thought, it looked really pretty, but practical. The flooring that they had put in was easier to maintain. It probably restricts slipping on, especially in the wintertime when you're bringing in snow and/or rain. So, that was really nice to see. And then, just all the updates that they had to their school. They had a new orchestra classroom, new gym flooring, painted walls, locker replacement. So, there was a lot of bond change, changes that they made with the bonds that they had. Let's see, then we went to tour at Trail Ridge Elementary. I loved kind of going back there because my kids started out there. So, I got to see a tour with Principal Jennifer Kaverne and Assistant Principal Stephen Campbell. They, one thing that stuck out, stuck out in my mind was the sensory room that they had. It was a calming room, not just used for neurodivergent children, but it was kind of this, kind of quiet and darker room with, you know, maybe some meditative music or something. So, it was just a calming room that can be used for classes, or it could be used just for any student. And then, they had a tinker space that I thought was really cool. It was a real-world learning room that was set up with tables, with different activities, which I also thought that it encouraged the social skills with the kids working together at the different stations. They had a robotics room and broadcasting room, and I was like, this is all new compared to when my kids went there. And then, we went to Cedar Creek Elementary, and, which I think we already talked about. They, one thing that stuck out with Cedar Creek was that they had the Life Skills Classroom for the special needs kids, which, you know, was great teaching them those life skills that they need. And then, the Westview Elementary Tour, one of our older elementary schools, and it was kind of neat to see the additions and how they are getting along. The things that they have there, I just wanted to point out that a lot of the elementary schools, they're, they're also different in what they offer, and they're really catering to... schools, they're also different in what they offer, and they're really catering to the community and the kids that they have there. One thing that stuck out at Westview Elementary was that they had the ELL students at different levels of learning and speaking English. So I think we had like South America speaking, you know, different countries that they had their languages, I think Ukraine was another one. So it was interesting to hear how that instructor does instruct the kids. She knows a little bit of Spanish, but also how she's able to use other tools to be able to get the kids to communicate and learn English. I think that was probably about it. So that was it.
All right, at this time, I have a board member Erica Miller who is joining us virtually, if she has the report.
Sure, good evening, everybody. So my first meeting attended was actually in the community, and that was the State of the City event hosted by our amazing mayor, and he discussed the plans for economic development and also really praised the district and board for their partnership, so that was exciting. I attended an education summit, which was a powerful day that included representation by eight area superintendents from around Kansas and Missouri. Also, teachers, mental health professionals, and student panel was there, and our very own, our LSR seven superintendent, Dr. Buck, was there, and Shelley Sanders was there also representing on the superintendent panel. And then we had some of our amazing teachers there. We had amazing teachers, and we had our students, we had some of our mental health professionals from LSR seven. So I was really proud to see that LSR seven was well represented at this event, which was a very large event, again, that encompassed schools and districts from all over the city. So that was great. Breakfast of Champions, which was hosted by the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce, and our very own Shelley Sanders was recognized as a part of their leadership program. On September 19th, I went to a, a community forum, and it was on grading for equity. It was hosted by Sean Harrell, which is an LSR seven teacher who's doing his dissertation on grading for equity. And basically, I really enjoyed the forum because it discussed how we can better support students learning through different grading measures, and also connecting with students, building relationships, how important all those things are, allowing for their interpretation, so the students' interpretation of the information to be heard, and also focusing on how allowing students to learn in the way that they like to learn. So that was a really engaging conversation, and it was an open forum, so community members were there also and able to interact with Sean, and it was a great presentation. I went to the campaign to support public education, and I think Board Member Garrett already spoke to that, but it was just educators and board members, students from all around the city that were just highlighting some of the things that they were doing in their districts that were working well. I also went on a couple of school visits, and as Board Member Johnson mentioned, I think one of the things about the school visits was it just reminded you, it reminded me why I am doing this work, why I feel called and aligned to do this work, and to be on the board, and it's to be in the classroom, it's to see our students working hard, it's to witness all of the amazing work that our teachers and our staff do on a daily basis. Because going to those schools, I mean, I just felt emotional at every school I went to because it was so beautiful seeing all the things working together, seeing how each principal knew every child's name that walked by, and how all the teachers were interacting with the students and meeting them where they were at, and it was just beautiful. So I was able to go to Underwood Elementary, Meadow Lane Elementary, and Campbell Middle. And again, just a shout out to our amazing teachers and staff. The work that you do daily is meaningful and impactful, and we appreciate you. I also went to Choose to Include event, and just like the other board members have said, it was amazing, amazing, amazing. So shout out to Stacy and her team, phenomenal job, I loved it, I loved being a part of it, and I love that we get other students in the district, you know, are included in that as well. I attended the dedication and open house for LSHS. I loved all the renovations, I really enjoyed, there was two students, I don't know if any of you all went, but there was two students there who were actually painting, they took a picture of the ceremony, and they were painting that picture. And so I know that President Sparks also spoke with those students, and so I'm hoping we see those finished products at some point. But I really enjoyed seeing the highlight video, they had a video highlight video there of the beginning of, you know, when LSHS was built, and so it was pretty cool to see everything from then till now. I also did the community, or the communications audit focus group, and so that wraps up my board report.
Thank you, Board Member Miller. At this time, Vice President Foley.
Thank you. So I attended the board leadership meeting, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast of Champions, the government relations meeting. I appreciate how our district has such a great relationship with our local leaders at the city, county, and state level. This led me to be invited to their snowplow rodeo, which was fun to see our city crews preparing for, training for winter, which isn't as far away as it seems. I also attended Choose to Include. I appreciate the work that Stacy Mathis and her team has put into creating the event. I also appreciated seeing her at Oktoberfest advocating for additional community participation to support LSR seven and Special Olympics. I attended the LSHS 150th Celebration, and also the communications audit.
All right, thank you for that report. I'm also gonna try to go pretty fast. Leadership meeting attended with Vice President Foley and Dr. Buck, a workforce alliance with Board Member Eslic. Business roundtable was another good meeting where we did get to see the presentation that Dr. Buck gave on the tax rate hearing. I was probably not supposed to say this, but our businesses, they support what we do in this district. They supported so much, they asked us why are we doing a rollback? They did, they actually asked us why are we giving the 22 million back, and so I appreciate their support. Steering Committee with our CAC, that was a wonderful event with us being able to talk and kind of set a new pathway for the Board of Education and what that partnership looks like. Grading for Equity, also attending that. Sean Harrell, if anyone does not know that, but he was also nominated for Teacher of the Year in LSR seven, and so I think that's worthy to be noted of that young man. Campaign to Support Public Education. What I gathered from that time with other educators and district leaders is that we cannot allow anti-public education forces to tell our story, but it's our job to tell that story of what we're doing for public education and for all of our students. And so I think we're doing a great job in LSR seven, and we're going to continue to build on those opportunities. Our CAC meeting, that was another opportunity where I got to present board. I will tell you that the CAC is on board, they're excited about our work session that we're going to have on the 5th, to be able to have that open dialogue. And then also, I invited the full CAC to come and observe. So during that meeting, it'll be us with the steering committee, but hopefully more individuals that even sat on that committee will be present. The, I know Dr. Buck kind of took my thunder from me about the board's World Cafe, but I know that the full board is excited about that. This is truly an opportunity for us to connect with the community. Community, I am asking you, I'm actually begging you at this point, please come to this event. We are wanting to be at your service, we're going to have food provided for you, but we're wanting to know, what are we doing right? What are we doing right? What are some opportunities for us to get better, right? We can only get better if we know that information, and what better people to get it from than from a wide range of our community. And so this is just the start of what we're going to do as a board. This full board is committed to this work, and we're committed to making sure that we're staying engaged with you. Lee Summit Cares, this is probably some big news, many of you probably already heard, but we do have a new interim executive director, Vanessa Hickman. So I was on a meeting today, they are going to be going forth with what that interviewing process is going to look like, what are the things that they're going to be requiring, but we know Lee Summit Cares is a big partner, especially for our students and prevention measures when it comes to like drugs, alcohol, substance abuse, and so we want to support them in whatever they're doing, and I will keep the board abreast to that process and what that looks like. When they are prepared to open that job, board members, we need to help with being able to make sure that there's qualified individuals that will submit for that job opportunity for executive director. And then last but not least, board, I would like to remind us that we do have our October 4th MSBA Regional Fall Meeting, and so if you're able to make that meeting, please do so, so that we can continue to get those governance awards. Other than that, that is the conclusion of my report, and I will turn it back over to Dr. Buck.
First off, just for everybody out there, that's an impressive list of, they live very busy lives outside being a board member, but that's impressive, so thank you all for everything you do. I know we probably have things going on even tonight, but do you forego, I know some of us do as well, to be here, so thank you for that. And Board Member Johnson, I just want to point out that Nathan Holder, Steven Shelton, Katie Bergen, and myself are also green gold, and so it's not all that bad, I don't think, so, all right.
I knew something was the problem about that.
All right, Board Member Garrett and I are sharing a computer because hers is acting funny, so bear with us. Next agenda item is 5.01 Committee Report on Finance.
So we just kind of go through by exception now, so if everybody's had an opportunity to look at the Finance Committee meeting, pending any questions or points of conversation, we will move forward.
All right, so at this time, I would like to have a motion for 5.02, which is to approve a transfer of 360 million and 56, no, sorry, 360,056 dollars and 99 cents.
See, you should have just read it.
I'm sorry.
I move to approve the transfer of 360,056 dollars and 99 cents from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 That motion passes. We have 5.04, I'm sorry, 3.5.03, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the treasurer's report and payment of the bills.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, 5.04. Do I have a motion?
Sorry, did I, yeah, sure, I moved that the board approved the 2023, '24 tax rates as presented.
Second.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm kind of going really fast. Any discussion?
Actually, yes, so from our tax rate hearing, a constituent brought up a very valid point about not hearing a lot of conversation around how we can conserve funds or ways where we can kind of cut things out of our budget. And I would just like to suggest maybe board leadership have a conversation about potentially a committee or putting it on a work session, maybe where we can have a conversation about ways that we can leverage individuals who are maybe part of our finance committee or business community to discuss that, and just explore that option further, because I really liked that suggestion from the community member, and I think it's at least worth having a conversation about whether it's something we want to pursue and how we would do that.
I appreciate those comments, and I'll just respond, I think we should always be in the business as the Board of Education, looking at ways to cut costs. And so I think when those budget opportunities come, of us being able to look over the budget, that's when we need to be having those discussions as a full board to see, making sure that we prioritize in our spending. And so I think that those opportunities are given, if there's additional opportunities that we need to look at as a full board, let's do it. But I think that should be something that we should always be doing every time that we have those contracts and things that come before us. And so I agree with you, Board Member Eslic. Any other comments or discussion on that? Okay, already have a motion, already have a second, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, that passes. And now we're going to go to our items of decision for consent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Okay, do I have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Okay, none opposed, that passes. And then we have our items for decision. Dr. Buck, I'm going to turn this over to you to bring up who will present.
First agenda item and items of decision, 7.01, Great Beginnings Transportation Update. So Dr. Shelton's going to come forward, and he's going to give you several options with a recommendation.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to bring this topic back, and I appreciate the board's wisdom in tabling this topic last month, and really give us an opportunity to work with members of transportation, I want to thank them for being here tonight, as well as the administrative team to come up with some options. The options that we're presenting tonight are rooted and centered around keeping this work, keeping transportation of our Great Beginnings students in-house, and that is our primary focus. What we've been able to do is continue to hire drivers. You know, we have been in an environment where we have not been able to hire drivers, we've been short on drivers, but in the last two or three months, maybe related to the wage increases, and whatever maybe has changed in the environment, the hiring environment, we are able to hire drivers, and so our staffing in the Transportation Department is much better than what it was when we started this process four, five, six months ago, trying to solve this problem. So we have that advantage, that we have the staffing, and we have, right now, the buses and the vehicles to be able to address the needs of our Great Beginnings students. Additionally, we have dedicated a router full-time to routing Great Beginning students. Now this is important because there's a lot of transition into this program throughout the year. It's much, much more fluid enrollment than any other program within our school district, and so having that dedicated router allows us to meet that need, which is what has driven this work, to meet that need to get students routed quickly and into the program and receive the service and the education that they so much deserve. So that is our goal, to keep it in-house completely and not step outside of that. If, for whatever reason, the hiring environment changes, and we don't have the staffing, or for whatever reason we don't have the buses, what would we do? Because once again, our major goal, our first goal, is to make sure our students in Great Beginnings who need those services get those services quickly. We have a couple of options, and we're exploring one option, which is piggybacking on what we discussed last month, was contract with assisted transportation on a very limited basis, a vehicle or two, which has a driver or aide or two, to meet that, to meet that short-term need of getting students to and from until we can get them routed, or until we can get a driver hired, or have a bus be available. The other option, and it's not noted in this agenda item because it wasn't available when this agenda item was created and put to you, but we've been working with Mobility Works to purchase or to purchase a van. And here, in the last week, they reached out to me, said, hey, we've got this van now, we didn't have it before, and they're going to bring it to us on October 2nd and take a look at it to see if it's really going to meet our needs. If it does, we can purchase that van, it has a lift, has the ability to have seating that's adjustable, and we can use that van for short-term basis, it would be our van, we would staff it with a driver that is a Lee Summit employee and an aide that's a Lee Summit employee. And so hoping, and that what we see on Monday really works, we would possibly be bringing you a request to purchase that van, and also approve the staffing of a driver and aide for that van, if that is something that's needed. So go back, our first, our first goal is to make sure our students have the services they deserve quickly and effectively and efficiently. Do that in-house, we have the staffing, we have the buses, the vehicles to do it, we've dedicated a router to make sure that happens quickly, and then if needed, we could step outside of our current staff and possibly with assisted transportation, or purchase a van. or purchase a van and the van driver and the aide that would go with it. The advantage of that is that, you know, the van driver won't need a CDL. And so the hiring of that, of that staff member would be, hopefully, much easier than finding someone with a CDL.
Alright, thank you.
Open any questions?
Thank you for that presentation, is there any questions from the board? Vice President Foley?
Thank you. So this actually isn't a question, it's a comment. I just wanna say thank you for all the work that you guys have done in administration to look at this issue, to hear the concerns of the transportation team, and to come up with an alternative solution. I appreciate that. I also wanna say thank you to everyone from the transportation team, especially those that are here today and those that have advocated in the past for this issue. I really appreciate your dedication to the students. And it was very impactful to hear about how so many of them just, they just wanted to keep working with these students because of the relationships they've built with the families. So, just wanna let you know, you're heard and we appreciate you.
Thank you for those comments, Vice President Foley, Board Member Murdock?
Sorry, when you turned it off, I was like, I don't know, I got confused there. First off, thank you, Dr. Shelton, for working through this, I do have a couple of questions, though, in regards to this. What are we actually approving tonight? Because the agenda item is very vague, right, in terms of the scope of what this might entail, so...
I appreciate that request for clarification. What you're approving is the plan, which the plan is to maintain this service in-house. In the event that we run into an environment where we can't manage our, meet our need in this department, what we will, what we will do is come back to you with our next solution, which could be purchasing a van and staffing with a van driver and an aide. Or it could be entering into agreement with assisted transportation for a van or two to meet that short-term need.
We thought it was important after last meeting that we come back and clarify the directions. So it had enough energy that we thought the board needed to have consensus around this.
And I agree with that, but even to that particular answer, we still, what are we, what's the actionable item that we are approving?
So, what I believe is, is this is not an item for decision. I believe it's listed as that, right? I think what is being shared with the board is, is that we're gonna stay the course, that we're gonna utilize the staff that we have, and they're going to transport our early learners. In the event that there is some additional things to take place, then we're basically saying, these are the additional options that we're expecting as the Board of Education to be able to approve.
That would come back to us.
That will come back to us with whatever that dollar figure is.
And as you see what's written, when I created this agenda item, the only other Plan B was assisted transportation. And since that time, Mobility Works has come forward with this opportunity to purchase a van. And so, that being said, the plan is to keep it in-house. And if we need to do something different, we're gonna come back to the board with the next most viable option.
Okay, because for me, I'm just, I'm giving my concern here of the way that the recommended action is worded, right, is to approve, so somebody, whoever's gonna make a final motion on this, I would just respectfully ask that we be very careful on what the motion actually is in approval, because one of the recommended actions here obviously says that, you know, we're gonna approve this plan, but if we can't meet the needs within two to three days of a transportation request, that we would engage assisted transportation, which to me speaks to an action item that we are engaging assisted transportation. And for me personally, I think that a contract should be there if we're actually saying that in two to three days of a transportation issue, we would then all of a sudden be engaging an outside company to actually come forward. So I'm fine with the agenda item if we don't say that, right? If we say that we're gonna approve the plan and move ahead with our current staff, I can get on board with that, but I won't support the way that it's currently written of assisted transportation, so...
And I believe that that is an appropriate modification to the, to the motion.
And my final question on this, just, just to, just so I'm in understanding, because when the initial thing is there on the recommended action, it says within two to three days of the request. Down below in the chart, it says that assisted transportation for one van and/or bus, the lead time is two to three months, so...
And so we would have to see a pattern, it wouldn't, the trigger to going to Plan B, it wouldn't be the first time that that were, that were to happen. If we started to see a pattern of a delay of service over time, and that would be a collective decision, that would be a decision where we would sit down with Transportation, we would sit down with Shelley Sanders and the staff at Great Beginnings to say, okay, it seems like it's time to go forward with, to the board with a Plan B.
Because now we've had repeated issues with a transportation thing, okay.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
I can get on board with that as long as we essentially kind of reword the motion, so...
I would also support that. With my comments from the last time that we visited this topic, I'm gonna remake this clear of what my personal individual expectations are, that we're meeting the needs of our students. And in the event that we're not able to meet the needs of our students, and I've spoken with many of you, and I made that clear with even the individuals from Transportation, is that I respect and support trying to keep this in-house. But ultimately, I believe that it's the duties of this board to meet the needs of our students. And so I wanna make sure that we're not the stumbling block of us meeting those needs. And so if, if we need to have more dialogue right now about what this looks like, then let's have this dialogue. Because what I don't want is for us to get in a situation where we have a pattern, where needs are not being met, and then we have to wait for another board meeting before we're now, we're talking about numbers, and then we're still drawing, dragging things out, and then we don't have a plan of action, and kids are still not being picked up and taken to school. And so that's a concern of mine. And I, and again, I respect fully Board Member Murdock, what your point is, and I think is a very valid point. But I also think that it's important for this board to consider what would be this break of, of, of meeting needs of our students if we're not giving some type of flexibility to administration to act upon need. Vice President Foley, sorry.
Thank you. So Board Member Murdock's comments and questions also brought something to my mind, a question about the van that you mentioned. You said that it would be looked at on October 2nd. So if that van is to be purchased, would you have to wait and bring that back to us for approval? Or is that something that you would purchase beforehand because we made this decision today? What does that look like? Cuz I would hate to put things behind and delay a purchase to where we couldn't get something because you wait for another board meeting.
We will follow our procurement process, I will tell you, there aren't a lot of opportunities. And if there aren't other vendors out here that are who can provide this type of vehicle, which, to be honest with you, I've been searching since the last time the board met. There just aren't a lot of our companies that provide this. And one, provide it and then have access to it. There may be ones, those who want to provide it, but this, the availability for any, any vendor is rather, rather small. So if we see, if we like what we see on Monday, the 2nd, I'm gonna work with Krista Taglia to get this moved forward as quickly as possible, and then work with that vendor to hold, if you will, hold that van, if we feel like it's the best direction for us to move. And then come back to the board.
At this time, is there a member that feels comfortable with making a motion? And then we can continue the discussion.
I would be interested from legal, how, what a motion would look like in this particular case. Because we're, I'm still struggling with what, what the motion even would be, because I don't feel like we're actually committing to an action. What I really feel like instead is, is as a board, we're reaching a consensus that, yes, this is the direction we would like to go with this, with the understanding that if we come into this particular thing, Dr. Shelton will actually be bringing back to us an actionable item that we would vote on. I'm not even sure we actually need a vote on this, but I, if you would like to come up with a motion that you think we can, that we can do, but I'm not sure that it needs a vote, cuz we're continuing with what we're doing.
That was my thought as I was sitting there, is that if the plan, at least initially, is to continue just using district resources, but redeploying, beefing them up, that's just administrative action that doesn't require a board decision. One possibility might be to, given the, you know, if it does become an emergency, to authorize not to exceed this much to get a van as soon as possible. Something along those lines is a fallback, so that you don't have to wait for another board meeting, you can expedite that action. That provides some flexibility and some board support, and then you would ratify the actual contract after, after the fact that you're giving them a ballpark figure. That's just an idea I had because it is...
And I, and I appreciate that a lot, because I was thinking about, you know, that through procurement policies, you could buy the van and come back to us with a ratification of the actual purchase, if necessary, right? That already is within, it's...
It depends, Krista's shaking her head, yes, if it's part of a already pre-bid piece in a certain dollar amount, then yes. So it's, it depends on what Mobility Works, and she's shaking her head, yes, so they apparently are fitting that. Krista, you wanna come up and speak?
I mean, it, yeah, you can, you don't need to, it's all good.
It depends on the amount of money that we're talking here. If it's over 50,000, that's when a bid would kick in, unless we have a cooperative contract that we can utilize to purchase the van. But if it's under that 50,000, then yes, we can go ahead and, and purchase that with just the quoting process. Now, another, another thing to consider is, this may be considered a sole source. I don't know, I don't know the, the details of the actual van.
Okay, so, so with knowing those facts, Dr. Shelton, do we need a motion to give you approval to purchase a van in the event that it fits within certain guardrails? Or do we need to table this item, which takes no action on it, and allow the district to meet the needs of our students? And in the event that those needs can't be met, then you have to come back to the Board of Education. Those are the options that I see on the table, unless any other board member has...
I would just come in, being somebody who's kind of in this world, sorry, but the van itself, I will not be shocked if it is above 50,000 dollars. In fact, I would actually be stunned if it is under 50,000 dollars.
It is.
So I think it would be wise for us to give authorization to make sure to get the purchase taken care of ahead of time, and that be our sole motion tonight, is to give the Director of Operations authority to make that particular purchase, or however the simple motion could be, we authorize the district to purchase a van from Mobility Works up to a cost and just set some, some number in that particular, I think that would be wise.
The number would need to be not to exceed 110,000.
Okay, so let me...
You seem to know that number.
I do know that number.
So, so, so let me ask this question then. With the two options, this, this already has the language here of the two other additional options other than our district staying the course of what we're doing. Is there one that you feel would be better than the other? Purchasing the van or outsourcing through the contract of the other company, assisted transportation? Is there one that you feel would meet our needs?
At this time, I would, I would recommend that we set an amount not to exceed 110,000 dollars for the purchase of a van, whether that be from Mobility Works or whoever that may be, but that's, that would be my recommendation. This van would not only help us in the area of Great Beginnings, but we have examples of other opportunities to use this type of transportation in other areas of the district.
I appreciate that answer also, cuz then my follow-up was gonna be, would we be in a situation if we purchased this van, especially when we're having conversations about making cuts, that this van is just sitting down and not being utilized? And so I appreciate that also.
It would, it would be used with other, and other, not other departments, but in other times that we need to transport students. In this case, with wheelchairs, but this van could be used in a variety of areas.
Okay, that sounds great, so do I have a motion? Someone would like to make a motion?
I'm gonna attempt it, but I don't guarantee this is correct, so Joe just stopped me here, so... I move to authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Operations to purchase a mobility, a, a van not to exceed 110,000 dollars to assist with transportation needs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 None opposed, thank you.
Thank you for indulging me on that conversation, I appreciate it.
That was great conversation.
Our next item for decision is 7.02 Book Appeal Empire of Storms.
Okay, this is our last book for the Board of Education of, that has been brought before us for appeal. I'm just gonna ask for a motion, and then we can open it up for discussion, do I have a motion?
I move to accept the community's recommendation and retain Empire of Storms.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, open for discussion. Vice, Vice Board Member Eslick? I'm sorry, it's actually Garrett, Board Member Garrett, sorry.
Well, thank you. So the Empire of, wait, yeah, it was Empire of Storms book, I'm getting confused on all the books we've been through. I thought that this one crossed over the line, I mean, it was very descriptive in the sexual acts amongst the characters. It was very questionable in its appropriateness, the language that was used, the description of, you know, it was very descriptive, very visual. Granted, there were no pictures, but I could visualize it. My whole point is, I know we have made these books available in our high school libraries. That's where they're restricted to. Now, I have a student that will be in high school next year, and I can talk to my kids. I'm just trying to give every parent out there the visual of the restrictedness, from what I can see so far, unless I'm missing something. So a child having these books available to them, and don't necessarily have to check it out. I mean, if I restrict my child from checking out the book, she can still take it off the shelf and, and sit there in the library and read it, I mean, and then put it back on the shelf. Is that, am I missing something with that? I don't know. But I still think that these particular books that cross the line in the description of sex is something that is adult. It is, it should not be around 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds, 16-year-olds, 17-year-olds. Now, I'm not saying ban the books, I'm not saying, you know, that they should never be published. I mean, but you can get the books elsewhere. And I know I've heard the argument, well, kids know about sex and they're gonna do it, and it's everywhere, they're gonna find it, okay. But this is an institution, and we should be raising the bar, not lowering the bar, to what's appropriate for students. I would like to see, I mean, I feel like Pandora's box has already been opened, I'm not trying to demonize our librarians, I'm not trying to say they're bad people, they are educated, okay. But maybe it's the process of which they are selecting these books. And this one, I, it was on my radar flag big time, and I, it's a hard no for me to pass this book. So that was what I wanted to say, I think the, the language in it is not educational. The, I'm sorry, the G O D D A M M, or D A M N, and the S H I Ts, and the other words, I mean, I just don't see how that's appropriate. I know we live in a culture where everything is sexualized. I just don't want to be contributing to it within our, I want to raise the bar. I want to bring in books that are thought-provoking, yes, and educational, yes. And the last book that we had, which was The Court of Thorns, I didn't see where it crossed the line. So I was willing to concede and say, okay, for that book. But now, if we're gonna be going down with a particular author that has a selection of books books that seems to progressively get more sexualized, I, I feel like individually those books, I don't think that they should just be rubber stamped and put in there because we approved this offer, author, but that we should be, um, reviewing those books individualized, is, I guess what I want to say, individually.
Thank you for those comments. It says Miller. Board Member Eslic?
I'm in her seat, yes, this is true. Um, uh, so I will echo, um, any of, uh, Board Member Garrett's comments. Um, and being that this is the fourth time that we've gone through this, I think we all pretty much know where this is going to end. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the book. The book had multiple five, six, seven, eight-page, very detailed sex scenes that I think are not suitable for an educational environment. Um, that's just the bottom line. I don't think it needs to be on the shelf in our libraries. Um, again, I agree, doesn't mean that they need to be banned or removed from the face of the earth. It's just, again, we have students here who are turned over to us in this school, um, in this community for educational purposes and we are expected to safeguard them and that includes the materials that they have access to. Um, our library system right now does actually not have the controls that Board Member Garrett is referring to, other than to keep it out of a middle school. But other than that, parents have no real means other than, um, trying to dig into their student's library access with a login that their student provides them, um, and then potentially emailing the librarian to say, I don't want my kids to have access to this. Um, but that's a lot of, uh, labor on behalf of the parent that they have to do when we could just not have this sort of material in the library to begin with. Um, so I just want to highlight an argument that has been made multiple times in the course of these types of conversations in this boardroom. Um, board members in, in these conversations have made the argument that we should not be, as a board, imposing our morals for other people's children. And I actually just believe that as board members, we are elected to be stewards of our, of the students, um, in the, in the way that we are called to make difficult decisions about what is suitable because we do it in how we allocate funding, what, uh, we approve curriculum choices. We approve a lot of things that require a subjective level of, um, evaluation. So I don't think this should be any different and if we're going to say that we should not be imposing our morals on other people's childrens in this space, then we have to do it everywhere. Here shortly, actually, I'm not sure we have any public comments, but, um, in a couple of, uh, agenda items here, I'm the parliamentarian and I, I read the rules for public comments. One of our rules states, because the board does not and cannot impose age-based restrictions on who attends or reviews board meetings and because children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, comments may not include obscenities or sexually explicit content. So this rule objectively establishes two things. One, obscenities and sexually explicit content are not suitable for children. Two, there is an age of a child that is objectively considered too young for obscenities and sexually explicit content. So in my opinion, either the board doesn't legislate anywhere what is suitable based on an objective socially acceptable standard for age-appropriate content, or the board accepts that this is our charge and executes this responsibility when the need does arise. But we can't make the argument in this space that on the library shelves, that we don't do this ever, and then we do the exact same thing in the second breath several agenda items later. So either we need to change our parliamentarian comments and remove that restriction entirely as the justification for why people in this room, as public commenters, can't say sexually explicit content and obscenities, um, or we need to reevaluate the way that we argue, um, keeping these books on the shelves. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Dr. Johnson?
Just for, um, some clarification about the morals, in terms of what we allow here in this boardroom, we don't have restrictions on age. The book is in a high school, so there, it's not available to kindergartners and middle school children and elementary school children who could be in this room. So there is a difference with that, is in the high school where these children are exposed to things. And so to say that we have to remove this out of parliamentarian statement, that's not equivalent because there's no restrictions on who can be in this room. But there are restrictions on who's in the high school libraries. There are not younger children in those high school libraries.
Excuse me, I, I appreciate all opinions and I truly do, um, but I believe that we need to keep order in this meeting, please. Thank you. Is there any other comments from any board members? Okay, we have a motion. Do we, did I call for a motion yet? Okay, we already have a motion, already have a second. Um, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so the motion passes four to three.
Next item is item information discussion is student board representation. And I do believe board members Murdoch and Miller are going to lead the discussion and try to get some consensus and bring it back next month for a vote.
Before, before, before you guys start, I just want to say, um, thank you, um, to, um, Board Member Murdoch and Board Member Miller. Um, the board, um, um, gave charge to these two board members to, uh, collaborate, work together and to bring something back to the full board. So I appreciate what we already have on paper, but I'll let you at this time, uh, speak to what, um, you all came up with. Thank you.
Yeah, um, so for the rest of the board and Board Member Miller, feel free here to, to cut me off if, if you have something to add, okay? Or that if I misstate something from our discussions. Um, ultimately, what you all have before you is a draft policy of bringing student represent, representation, um, to us on the Board of Education. I want to highlight a couple of things here in terms of what we talked about and what we were, felt really, really strongly in terms of making sure that we had student voice here. So, um, the first thing is, is from a continuity standpoint, we moved from essentially a one person, uh, per high school model to the junior and senior, um, with the idea that if the junior wanted to re-up and continue to serve as a senior, you get some continuity within that voice, um, that carries over to the board from year to year. Um, you get a little bit of experience, broadening that perspective, um, all the way up to eight students. Um, we thought wasn't too big of a group, um, to still work together, um, but was big enough to bring a lot of different opinions, um, and, uh, some diversity to what we want to see, um, or what we want to hear. The other thing, and Board Member Miller brought this up in our discussion, I thought it was a very good idea that I hadn't, that we hadn't thought about until she, um, came up with it was, we also would want to designate an alternate, um, from each high school, um, to make sure that there's always a working group going within, um, the buildings, should we have enough interest, um, in this particular position. Um, one of the things we had initially bantered about was a small group coming to us within, um, for lack of a better term, an advisory group within the building to that representative. Um, we essentially though, decided and landed upon what you see here, thinking, let's start small and expand. Um, if it, if we're getting what we want out of, um, student voice, if we see, um, progress with this, you can always expand. Um, what we didn't want to have happen is to create a large group that had voids, um, to fill from time to time. Um, so that's why we ended up kind of scaling it back and saying, let's start with a little bit smaller group here. Um, as you all know, and I think we've talked about even as a group, we don't want, you'll see that in the qualifications and characteristics, um, while we want the students to be in good standing, meaning being good stewards within their school, we don't want it limited to that upper one percent kind of crowd, um, which a lot of times already has representation in multiple groups, um, throughout buildings. So, um, we essentially don't want to, we don't want to recycle student council, right? Or, um, we don't want to, we want to make sure that your GPA is not a limiting factor, right? There, there can be lots of reasons for having, um, n- maybe not a high GPA and you could be an incredibly, incredibly valuable representative to our building to help us understand some of those issues for why some of those barriers actually exist. So we didn't want, um, factors such as, um, requiring a certain GPA, um, to be representative here with, um, with the Board of Education. Um, in the actual responsibility section, I know we have talked about this a lot as a group of when they would come, what they would do. It is intentionally broad and vague so that the board can charge this group, um, with what information we want to have come back to us, um, and essentially also how often they should come to us. You'll see in number one, they're under responsibilities of student representatives, attend at least four regular Board of Education meetings. So it wouldn't be limited necessarily to those four. Board Member and, and Miller and I actually kind of disagree on how often, which is a great thing to have because it's provided great conversation on how often to actually have them come before us. The biggest thing is, when they come before us, let's make sure it's meaningful, right? Let's make sure that there is a topic that we want to address or talk to them about in whatever setting, um, that may actually be. Um, you will notice also in that same, um, in the same thing, and I know that we've had an email go around, um, with us on this in number seven, right? Which is visit their high schools, feeder schools. I think that could be reworded if possible, visit the feeder schools. Um, I know that transport, we don't want transportation to be a barrier to the, to the service, right? Um, and so, um, if there are suggestions of either omitting that, right? Or, um, rewording that, certainly we would be, um, open to those, uh, suggestions for that. Um, the last thing, and then I'll let Board Member Miller comment if she has anything to, if she has other things to add here. You'll notice you don't see an application yet, right? Because that's more of a process-oriented item, um, for it. So you, what you're actually seeing here is the policy aspect of it and then as a group, we would be able to drill down to not only create, um, the application process, but then to decide what kind of items we want them to actually come and bring to us, talk to us, the formats. All of those kinds of things are things that we can do internally, um, with the representatives, um, once we actually get them in place. There is a truncated timeline you probably saw in there, um, since the goal would be to have this in place starting second semester, but with the idea, obviously, that then in April and May, there's a transition so that the next group of representatives, um, are ready to go, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So, um, and that would be a full school year that we would want those, uh, particular representatives, um, to be committed to. Um, Board Member Miller, what would you like to add to this?
Yes, so, um, we, this was a great opportunity to highlight student voice and we're excited that, um, we know that student representation, um, and student voice improves the functioning of our schools, right? So, um, um, and they are able to provide a unique perspective, um, on their experiences. So we are excited about moving this forward. Um, the, the things that I would want to, um, add, which I know we will kind of do some fine tuning later, but, um, just for consideration, I'd like to also have us consider to really decrease barriers for submission, just adding for that application process, just being able to add in their, um, other opportunities to, um, submit their application, whether it be electronically or bringing it to S L C or something like that. So just for consideration there. And then, um, the other piece that I think would be important for us to consider is adding a teacher or staff recommendation. And again, it's not meant to be cumbersome or a barrier, but I think it's also helpful for us as a board to be able to hear from a teacher or a staff member that can speak to that person's abilities, strengths, um, and things that they've seen. So, um, I think those are kind of the main, main things that I wanted to add. You did a great job, um, summarizing that.
I, I, yeah, I appreciate you bringing up the staff recommendation because we were talking about that it'll be important in addition to applications that we have some basis, right? Of, of getting to know the student in addition to wh- the small interviews and stuff that we would hope to conduct with any applicant. So, um, I appreciate Board Member Miller bringing that up. The other thing that I do want to make sure that we did see is you'll see up there the, um, what proportion of vote of student representatives, there's a question mark on that. Um, we really kind of toyed around with and we even sent to, to Joe, um, some feedback on them placing an item on the agenda that students would want discussed, um, and making sure that not only did, was there an avenue for them to do that, but also that we were separated from the newly enacted, um, law in terms of how they would have to go about doing that. Um, and so we were able to craft that, um, to make sure that, like, if the entire group of eight has a compelling issue that they think the board needs to discuss outside of a report format and they want it on the agenda, then we could essentially say, hey, if all eight of you say you want it on the agenda as a discussion topic, we're going to put it on the agenda, right? Um, and so, um, maybe it's seven out of eight, that's why there's a, there's a blank there, um, that the board would need to decide. But we did feel that that was important, that if there was a compelling issue and they knew that there was something, um, that was in need of the board addressing and/or talking about, um, that they had an avenue that they could get our attention essentially quicker maybe than normal and get it on, onto an agenda for us to talk about. Um, with that, I mean, we're open to any suggestions you all would like, um, with changing, editing, whatever you all think.
All right, Dr. Buck?
So, uh, thank you for doing the work. I'm the one that brought up the concern about the feeder schools, I just want to explain. Uh, more and more kids put off getting their driver's license. Uh, you know, my, my own kid is in college now, she didn't get it until her second semester of senior year. So in order then for them to get to feeder schools while feeder schools are still open, because high school does let out a little early, they'd, they'd have to rely on a parent getting them there. So I don't want that to be a barrier because they could still come to our meetings in evenings. It's easy for a parent to bring a, a fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old to a meeting for a board meeting, but it might be very difficult for that fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-old and sometimes eighteen-year-olds in our district, um, to get to those feeder schools. I think it might be a barrier and limit the number of applicants. So that's why I was advocating on, on, on that behalf and, and, so thank you for, for bringing that piece up.
Vice President Foley?
Thank you. Um, so I was thinking through this from the student perspective and thinking, you know, why would a student want to get involved with something like this, coming to meetings that sometimes are not very exciting? And so something that came to mind for me was scholarships. So I think this would be a great opportunity for us to look and see if we could try to find ways that students who participate in this could be eligible for scholarships. Um, and, you know, maybe that can be like an enticing feature to get them to participate because this can be a step towards a scholarship. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, vice.
I'll take it.
Board, Board Member Eslic?
Um, uh, I wanted to touch on the, the GPA portion of, um, so I don't, I do not disagree at all that GPA shouldn't be, like, there shouldn't be a, has to be a four-point oh, four-point-five extended scale in order to qualify. But I do think there should be at least a passing GPA requirement, like a two-point-eight, right? Is passing, is seventy percent.
By them being in good standing, they would be eligible for building activities and stuff which would require that.
Okay, so I had that in quotes. I was like, it's good standing, no discipline and, or like, if that's maybe a definition because even I wondered what that really meant. Yeah, just some clarification because I was even wondering exactly what, um, what that was. On the topic of the recommendation, since we're talking about barriers and limits, um, limitations that could prevent a student from either wanting to be engaged or wanting to go through the application process at all, let's say you do have that two-point-eight GPA student who's not the greatest student and maybe there haven't been as many educators who have been really invested in them. What about just a recommendation for someone who's been involved with them? Could be a church leader, could be somewhere they volunteer, maybe not just someone in education, but, yeah, maybe broaden it a little bit just to someone who can attest to the work they've done. And they have to qualify why they are even able to assess this student. Um, so it has to be an adult, somebody they work for, something, but just a little broader than just, uh, teachers and, and staff. Their opinions are very valuable. I think if we just allow students a little more opportunity, um, maybe it would encourage that diversity you're talking about from lots of different avenues. But I, I love this. I, um, I too was trying to figure out how we would encourage students to want to be involved because I can see this really attracting your high-performing students who are just very motivated to, um, juggle lots of things and, but are, how do you reach other students? So, yeah.
Thank you for those comments. Um, Board Member Miller?
Yes, so, um, Board Member Eslic, thank you for bringing that up. I actually had that same thought as I was thinking through today, that I just wondered if, you know, we would open it up to other, um, other people that are in their life, you know, that can attest to their character and their, and, and their strengths and things like that. So I also had the same, um, thought today and I, so I appreciate you bringing that, that up. I, I, I would agree with that if the other, if other board members would also be agreeable.
Thank you for those comments. Um, any other comments? Uh, Board Member Murdoch?
Yeah, I, I just want to get some clarification from everyone, um, just to make sure that we.
just to make sure that we are all on the same page here before we make the minor changes that we're talking about. Because it sounds like it's minor changes that you, that you all are seeking, Board Member Miller and I, to do. So, what we're really talking about here is, is everybody fine with eight, up to eight with an alternate? So, we're talking, by the way, two from each one of our high schools. That includes SRA, is, is why it's at eight in this case. I will talk to leadership just a little bit about how we could incorporate Miller Park, okay? You know, if somebody would like to serve for Miller Park. So, we'll, we'll talk about that to see if we can't get that figured out as well. But, I'm just making sure that the numbers are good, from placing things on the agenda, unanimous of the group to put it on the agenda, seven out of eight of them. What do you guys want to see? What would you all like to see?
Four out of eight, I mean.
I personally would say majority.
Anybody have a strong opinion one way or the other?
I, I think majority is fine, is the, are, the alternates are not voting members, right? They get, there are eight votes, period. Okay, so, it would have to be five, got it, yeah.
Well, I think Miller, adding Miller Park would possibly take it over the nine, which makes it an even number.
I mean, we'll see, yeah, we'll talk about, about that. Because I'd like to talk, talk to Kelly too about it, so. Okay, so, that takes care of those two questions I had for you. And then, the, the only other thing, if you feel strongly about how often you want them to meet with us or feel strongly about a format, make sure you send a message to us as we're making the edits sometime over the next, you know, two, three days. Because we're going to, this is coming right back on the fifth, right? We're going to make the edits and do it on the fifth, right?
Correct, this is going to be a, for a vote to finalize this policy on the fifth.
Right, so, if I could just ask if anybody has any final edits that they want to see, it needs to be by Monday, so that we can flip it around as quickly as possible to you all.
A suggestion that I would have as far as to define good standing?
Right, I have that note from Board Member Aslick.
And I, and I think that would even be helpful to have in the policy, what that definition is. An actual definition.
We might get rid of that, we could get rid of that terminology too, though, and use eligible for or whatever. So, we'll, we'll, we'll get that figured out for you, okay?
And, and the reason why, I'll just be frank, the reason why I said that is because when we brought up discipline, and I, I know you didn't mean well, but mean ill when you made the statement of discipline, but I don't want, because a student had an infraction, that they're now disqualified to be able to participate. Because, I mean, I don't want to double, you know, cause discipline on, double jeopardy on the student, because. So, go ahead. Board Member Aslick, I want you to be.
Just going to wear a sign, I'm just going to put this right here for you. But, that made me think of another thing, actually. And I don't, I don't want to automatically go to like a negative, but there probably should be some topic in here with regard to, like, conduct that could get you removed, because, you know, these students are representing all the schools and all of their high school peers, and there needs to be some level of expectation of conduct, of not only conduct here, but conduct in their schools, because, you know, they're representing the student body to us as a board. So, there's a certain level of expectation that would be higher than their peers to have that privilege of being part of this group. So, I think, I don't want to be punitive, but I think we also need to have some level of standards of code of conduct in and outside the boardroom.
Would, I, I guess I'm, I'm curious to know, would board policy and like their student handbooks and all that, would those standards be across the board? Or do you feel like that we still wouldn't, would, like, and we just put like a, you know, like at the bottom of the policies?
That's a good point, and I do think that their handbooks would cover the conduct that we're talking about. But, to that point, one of the issues that I, I did think about just a little bit was lack of participation, which isn't necessarily an infraction. Like, if for some reason you had somebody who applied, and then all of a sudden essentially became an absentee, that's one of the reasons, right, why we had the alternate in there to begin with to try to step into that particular role, and then you could fill that particular role. So, I, I think that would probably be the bigger issue that we might face with, with that kind of thing, whether it be senioritis, whatever the case may be. But, I think the handbook would cover the aspects that we're talking about outside of just a lack of participation that we would, that we might need to address. So, we could probably toss around a little bit of language, I can send to Joe even tomorrow, or Board Member Miller could tomorrow, to make sure that he was okay with it.
Sorry, I think it would be fair to go either with the standard of that, at the minimum, it needs to be the standard that it is for us as a board, which is three consecutive meetings unexcused. That's, that's, that's my thoughts.
Sorry, they only have to attend four, right? Because it's four meetings?
But, they would be, they would have to gather and actually participate outside of those four meetings.
Oh, you mean their own meetings?
So, I'm saying their own meetings.
So, in, between our four B, board meetings, plus their meetings, if they miss a total of three.
Three.
We'll come up with some language.
Just play with it, don't make it, I just say that it at least has to be.
And here's the thing that you need to remember, that Board Member Miller and I, we did talk about this. This is going to be a work in progress, this, this first year, we, let's, I don't want to get too specific where all of a sudden we have to break out of what we have just created. I would rather be able to tailor the policy as we go and, and hone it in a little bit, right? Based on circumstances that are happening. So, the idea is, is that we want the policy to be, to be broad enough that we can be flexible as a board here as we get it started in the second semester. And I think, I think what we'll, we will find, that there probably will be some changes that need to be made, and then we make those as you go into the 24-25 school year through the selection process, and then the expectations that are set for the upcoming school year.
Absolutely.
Dr. Buck?
So, as I was thinking here, we could, Board Member Murdoch and Miller, we could have Dr. Herzog send you the MSHA citizenship requirements to be able to participate. There is a standard within MSHA, you know, you're eligible to participate in sports or in a band competitions or cheerleading competitions, so on. So, we could send that maybe as a starting point to see if you like that or not. And then, two, I see there is no code on here. We probably need to have Dr. Carlson and Mrs. Ismer work on with MSBA, what code would be the appropriate code, and have that available for you next Thursday. All right, thank you.
If that MSHA standard can come to the full board, while I know that it's going to go through the process, but I think the full board can be able to put their eyes on it and give feedback to that too.
We could do that.
To Board Member Murdoch or Board Member Miller. Any other conversation on this topic? Listen, I am excited, I think the board is excited, and hopefully our students are excited about this opportunity that this board seemed fit to provide to them, to be able to give us feedback in all decision-making that appeals to them. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move for items of information. Nine point one, building level engagement with board priorities. Dr. Buck?
If I can get the mic to work here. Yes, next item of information is our written reports, there's four of them. Nine point oh one, building level engagement with board priorities, if there's any questions.
All right, board, any comments, questions? All right, let's go to the next one, Dr. Buck?
Nine point zero two, board metrics, human resource hiring data, any comments or questions?
Okay, Board Member Murdoch?
Yeah, I only have one here, because, because we're referencing Dr. Carlson, the CSIP, as that, are we, as, as the upcoming CSIP committee, going to have this as well as we move forward with the new CSIP? Does that make sense? So, are, like, because there is a goal related to the diversity of staff and stuff like that, is there a plan, or, or is that something the committee will address as we go? To continue that particular goal?
I think what he's asking, are they going to review the current goals as part of creating new?
So, at meeting number one, we took a look at our first CSIP and all of the year's progress in terms of the year-end report that we gave last, I think it was April. So, we saw all of last year's end-of-year data, which would be inclusive of the data up until that point. It obviously didn't include this data. If we want to, we can bring this as another data set, but the charge of that team will be to create those, the larger three to five strategic areas, and then those focus groups, and then we can commit, if we desire as a team, to ensure that this remains one of those things. But theoretically, that would be the will of that group.
Okay, okay, that's fine. Hope that works, thanks.
Next item is nine point zero three, business service program evaluation, any comments or questions?
Board? Okay.
And the final item in written reports is nine point zero four, and that's the 2020 bond budget update. Any comments or questions?
All right, thank you for all those reports, and we're going to go ahead and move to our public comments, and we have no one signed up for public comments. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, all that's, all right.
You're just adjourned.
So, we're done. We're done.